I will call the meeting to order. Uh, can join us in the flag, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, it's all right with everyone that take the agenda out of order. And we'll start with new business. Anybody's got new business?
Mr. Chairman, I have some new business. They really hate to bring it up, but it's not too necessary at this point.
Do you need a few minutes?
I, um, I would just hand out two board members' names.
Can we, um, do the, uh, do the minutes of the last meeting then, uh, Mr. Fogg?
Steve, did you want to do the 3-6 that was tabled?
Yes, yeah. Um, I did, um, see that there was a statement by previous board member Liz Olympia of her concern of possible students who didn't live in Wakefield, and that's not in the minutes. I think that needs to be in there. Uh, there's a concern whether they were Wakefield students or out-of-district students.
Do you know where that was in the minutes? Do you recall?
It was, I believe it was down, uh...
Yeah, we should have been at the end, and those weren't, and that wasn't sealed. Those were sealed.
Right, but then they've been unsealed.
The, okay.
These have been unsealed at this point. And it was near the end, uh...
Point of order, they shouldn't have been unsealed if they had someone's name in At no point should that section been unsealed since they were referring to students.
I don't see any student names in here.
There were student names. There was reference to the residents as well. Therefore, they should not be in public, in non-public minutes. They're available to the public. They should be sealed.
What we're talking about is what's here right now, and I don't see any student names in here.
Okay.
And so...
What do you...
I'm looking at the non-public minutes from 3-6. I don't see any, I don't see names. I'm just skimming, but...
Right.
But you're right.
Mr. Brown is mentioning a statement made by Liz Olympia. In that statement, students' names were referenced, which cannot be made available to the public. Those should be part of the minutes.
What I put in there is I left the student's name out of it.
Okay.
But the, but the gist of the comment needs to be in there because it was in fact stated.
That's fine.
Okay. That's what I just stated.
Okay, so do you want these amended?
Yes.
To read that there was a question?
That, the statement, that there was a question of whether there was any out-of, out-of district students.
Okay, I would have to review the video in order to know at what point to remove names.
There's no video.
Oh, okay, it's just the minutes, the original minutes, to get the exact wording.
Were you 3-6 secretary?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be...
You have, then you must have it.
No.
No.
The minutes were sealed. They were delivered as typed, and...
Okay.
If we're making a...
So all I need you to do is dictate to me what you agreed to put in the minutes.
And it's, it seems to me that someone who was here for this meeting, which was not all of the current members of the board, would state what they think is missing in the minutes, and those who were present would then have an opportunity to vote on whether or not that's a correct understanding. So that would just be the two of you, right? Or Ralph, were you...
I was asked not to join the public meet, uh, non-public...
So it would just be you two. And if you two agree, then that's what I would suggest for amending the non-public minutes.
Well, that's what I suggested.
Okay.
The previous board member Liz Olympia made a statement that there was a concern that students were not Wakefield students and they were out-of-district students. Fairly enough. Not to mention any names, just the fact of the statement itself.
Okay.
Okay, so Steve, I need you to read it a little more slowly for me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They had a statement that there was a concern...
That there was a concern that there were some students who were not Wakefield students and that they were out-of-district students.
Some students at Paul School.
Yes.
Who did not reside in Wakefield.
Correct.
I don't think there's any practical difference where we put that in the minutes.
It was near the end of the meeting. I remember I handed exactly where... All right, so how do we deal? Do we make that a...
Well, you have a section, you have a section on tuition, and that would be a pertinent section to talk about non-residents students. So why not add it in the section of tuition before we go to the section on phone system?
I'm just getting a motion to accept the minutes as amended, and some people will abstain.
All right, um, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'm gonna, um, I didn't have the exact wording, I'm sorry.
Deb, yeah?
Deb, could Mr. Brown ask to add a statement by previous member Liz Olympia, who made a statement that there was a concern that there were some students at Paul School who did not reside in Wakefield? And that will be inserted after the item two in the tuition paragraph.
All right, did, did you make that motion, Deb?
I did, yes.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe...
I'm standing.
All right, so that's two zero three. All right, thank you. Um, are you ready for your new business now?
Well, under new, under new business, I'd like to address the school board. And specifically, Ms. Macedo, my comment, I would like to keep it to my shorter comment if I could. Um, but if necessary, under new business, I'm prepared to make a second statement. So, there we go. Given the constant confusion, distraction, and diversion of a current school board member's personal responsibility, compounded with ongoing efforts to create suspicion, animosity, and distrust based solely on false allegations, I feel as though I've joined the Wakefield Drama Club, where actors present illusions instead of being on the Wakefield School Board, where members provide leadership that enhances trust and camaraderie, achieving the goal of providing the best possible education for all students enrolled, and a work atmosphere where administration and staff work together without fear of degradation, backstabbing, and retribution. After long reflection and constant reconsideration, and based on an unfortunate chain of events I personally witnessed in recent weeks, I'm asking this school board's support and requesting the immediate resignation of board member Vivian Macedo. Thank you for your consideration. So I would, I would make a motion to ask Deb Macedo to consider submitting a resignation from the school.
Absolutely not. I am formally requesting that I get legal representation against false accusations made by not only members of this board, but members of the administration. I have documentation, and I will discuss it with the...
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Do you want to open that up to other, more discussion, Mr. Chair?
If there is anybody having discussion?
I think Deb might want to add something to that.
What I'm adding is that the accusations are false. They're untrue. You've had a wonderful time visiting my neighbors, trying to spread rumors. I will address that, but I will address it in a proper manner. Going to my neighbors and starting rumors is not acceptable. Going through the town and discussing children of the school with our truant officer is a violation of confidentiality. Going and discussing any child in this town with the truant officer is a violation of the FERPA laws. Now, accusing me of anything, I have done nothing wrong and will not submit to this. I have documentation proving that everything I have done has always been legal, accurate, and in the best interest of the school and the children. I will not be bullied and harassed, and I will not be blackmailed, and that is what's going on right now. I cannot further discuss this because the rest of it involves personnel which will be dealt with in non-public. So if necessary, then I will obtain an attorney, and I am asking for the board to approve legal representation. At this point, I actually don't know who our attorney represents. If they represent the school board, the school district, or our superintendent, and I guess, you know, maybe you could clarify that for me.
I represent the school district. I represent the taxpayers of this town of Wakefield. I'm here, and you, this is the board of directors of the...
Yes.
Wakefield School Board, and the CEO is to my left, and the superintendent.
And what happens when you have a conflict?
I don't know that we have a conflict. I don't see any conflict at all at the present time. I, I think there's been, there's been a motion, and, you know, they can vote on that. You have a decision as to whether or not you want to go along with that.
Okay.
And then we keep on going.
Okay.
And I'm here to answer any other questions, but you're not under any obligation to accept the will of the rest of the board.
Okay.
It's just an expression of their intention.
Well, I do, I do have a question, however. If you have a concern between the CEO and a board member, and there is a concern, what happens in that respect? And who actually does this law firm represent?
I represent the Wakefield School District, so, so I represent the entire...
And if I can please reiterate that, we, uh, we have an employee situation, and I am not, I...
Without knowing, I don't, I know nothing about the facts.
And it will not be discussed in public because I don't feel that anyone...
Right.
You should be discussed in public. It is, personnel should never be discussed in public, out of respect as well as confidentiality.
Agree with that.
Okay, and so I am simply asking if there is a conflict, who in fact does this law firm represent? I have asked this before. I have been advised by the State Board of Education to ask the question. I have asked, and I was refused an answer. So I'm asking now in public, who does this law firm represent?
I have answered that question of you. The law firm represents the school district. That's, that's the one answer. That's the same answer that counsel just gave.
Well, if you have an employee and a board of directors that represent the school district, who does the law firm represent? It's a conflict.
Well, if there's a dispute between the, the board of directors, if you will, and the CEO, or between members of the board of directors, we are here to provide advice solely to the entire school district through the school board, and we aren't going to take sides in that dispute. So we don't represent either of those parties, but we're here to provide information to keep the school district as a whole...
Mm-hmm.
...out of trouble.
Okay.
That's our job. Trying to keep you out of trouble and trying to keep you to do your job, which is to educate the kids in town.
So taking, and, so taking one person's word and submitting a letter to a board member without proof of false accusations, how is that handled?
I'm not going to speculate. I don't have enough data or information about any particular incident without doing research and understanding what that is. I'm, I'm here to answer questions if they come up regarding policy, procedure, laws, and that sort of thing.
And I'm here to state that I will not be bullied by anyone in this school district. I am going to do what I'm here to do, and that is to do everything in the best interest of the children. I am not going to have people spreading rumors, going to my neighbors, looking for trouble. I'm not going to have people who are going to make false accusations. You have an accusation, you bring it forward, and you provide proof.
All right, okay. We got a motion and a second on the floor.
I would only say, Deb, that your immediate response is a typical example of the way you distract and divert attention.
I distract, divert attention?
Yes. So I would move to, ask to move the question, move the motion.
Steve?
Good.
I, I actually second that, but I actually need more information myself, knowing some of the stuff. Uh, kind of, I'll loop with, with some of it, but I do second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Four to one.
Continuing our new business, my second comment, that I submit to the school board, there's a motion of no confidence in the school board member Vivian Macedo. I'm seeking a second to my motion in order to open up this issue for discussion.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
On April 3rd, 2013, I had the unpleasant, unpleasant opportunity of witnessing Ms. Macedo's statements regarding transparency in the Wakefield School Board, and again reading her comments in the April 11th issue of Carroll County Independent on page three. At the same meeting on April 3rd, Ms. Macedo demanded removal of administrative members of our meeting prior to some conversation regarding a public document during the non-public portion of our meeting. Ms. Macedo expressed her opinions on an issue discussed in a non-public meeting of the previous school board, which had been sealed. Once the administrative team rejoined the non-public session and discussion commenced, Ms. Macedo insisted that I had a conflict of interest regarding the issue at hand, which I had to disagree with based on a lack of information supporting her claim. The issue was discussed, settled, and voted upon with one abstention, which was not mine. After the non-public meeting was adjourned, and all members of the administrative team had left the room, Ms. Macedo unleashed a verbal assault on the actions and the decisions of the administration, and attempted to inject her version of an incident involving staff and administration so that three of her peers on the school board could be informed. In my opinion, this posturing is an attempt to create more distrust and animosity, and an effort to gain support for her own personal shortcomings. Her actions and statements all subject, also subject the town to legal actions, again in my opinion, in an effort to somehow create support for her illogical, nonsensical position that she has been harmed. After this date, April 3rd, Ms. Macedo has made false allegations regarding the personal conduct of this school board member, myself, publicly and privately, leading to another experience of watching a publicly elected official acting improperly. These actions have led to my conclusion that the Wakefield School Board cannot conduct business effectively, and any input Ms. Macedo has cannot be held in high regard considering the inaccurate and deceptive practices witnessed to date. We cannot possibly expect to create an atmosphere of inclusion, courtesy, and respect in our school system when the top of the pyramid expresses in its actions that the biggest bully shall prevail. I personally have no confidence that board member Macedo's actions will teach proper leadership skills to our administration, staff, and most importantly, to parents and their children currently enrolled in the Wakefield School System. Please support my vote of no confidence and request once again the resignation of Ms. Macedo from the Wakefield School Board. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I...
One.
I do have to say that I have, I was witness to what I thought to be improper upbringing of an employee at our last meeting, and also at a different meeting we had in regards to an SAU meeting. I also had a rough time when I heard that children in our building were getting beat and neglected, and that our school principal was doing nothing about it, and that was from Ms. Macedo. I contacted my chair and said that I had an absolute concern, and that I needed to know who to talk to, and he directed me to you, and in turn, I believe you sought legal counsel.
Yes.
Because I was concerned, and I wanted to make sure. I have faith and trust in you and the leadership in this building, and I did not want to listen to rumor. I also regretfully have had, been accused, and I've already talked to this, that I've promised the lunch staff certain contracts and things, and those were based on Ms. Macedo as well. And I actually asked them, and they said that they had never spoken of me with Ms. Macedo, and I guess that disheartens me. One, to think that children in the building were being hurt, which I know now that they were not, but also that other staff are being talked about when they're not here to defend themselves.
There's no truth in that. The, how you knew about the cafeteria, Ms. ...
One of the times.
Oh, so, I apologize.
Aye.
That's what I have to say.
Well, so?
Mm-hmm. The comment regarding the kitchen staff was in non-public sealed minutes, so could you please explain how Mrs. Sears referring to that?
The kitchen staff?
Absolutely. That three-year contract that you addressed in public was a discussion that you were not at, and it was in non-public sealed minutes. Any discussion regarding that...
I heard that at our last board meeting from you.
No, you did not.
I beg to differ.
No, actually, it was addressed, and you addressed it at your first meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't from me. We've had no conversations since, only in the meeting. No, I'm sorry.
When you brought it up, that was in public, that you said in public that rumors were going around.
That's right.
And that was out in the public.
It was. No, but the, how, the rumors, how that statement was made...
Does it matter?
No, but that was non-public sealed minutes, so it came out of non-public sealed minutes.
All right, all right. Then who brought it up?
I don't know. I don't know. It was addressed at our first meeting.
May I say something? I'm going to stick up for myself, Deb.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with you.
No.
But I didn't say that to you, so I don't, have no clue where you're getting it from because I've never ever spoke to you about Bonnie.
No, I'm not the one that brought it up.
I'm just trying to stick up for myself.
All right, um, do we have a motion and a second on the floor? Do, do you have that, Deb? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Four to one. Do we, do we need to go into a non-public round for a moment?
I, I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that, that, take the time, let this simmer down a little bit, but more for Ms. Macedo's self-reflection. More so that the entire school board and the people it's supposed to serve have, have a little bit of time to digest past events, recent past events, and hopefully take the time and gain some honesty and some integrity on the issue, and perhaps make the right choice for the, for the best interest of the town of Wakefield, kids going to our schools.
Absolutely, and I will sit here with honesty and integrity as to what's being done to me and to my family, and I will stand up for it. I will again request legal representation, and if the board does not grant it, I will seek legal representation. I will not be bullied and harassed out of this position because I'm exposing things that are being done illegally. Having meetings in parking lots, continuing conversations about children, holding children over my head is not acceptable.
Can I say something, Steve?
This is, well, if...
It has to do with the child, you mean? I hope it wasn't my kid, because I...
You can't, you can't, no, I can't, I'm getting...
No.
No. Attorney thing, no.
I, well, I'm just saying, because I just hope that people watch certain rumors about my child.
You want, well, if you want to do that, Danielle, you'd have to get, we'd have to go into, get, go into non-public on the adjournment.
Oh, I'll definitely do it at some point, yes.
All right.
Because I don't want my children being insulted.
Um, I, other than that, the comments that were made on the letter from Barbara Lohman, other than the, um, the custodian comment, all these other comments, I, I know I heard them, and there were, there were at least two other board members. I, I don't know if Bob, you were there for all of it, but...
I was in the front of you.
I, I did, you, you did make these statements.
The only statement I made in non-public sealed minutes.
No, no, this is after the meeting had adjourned.
After the meeting had adjourned, there was more to it than that. I was being, I was being attacked by Mr. Fogg regarding my grandchildren, and I, this cannot be discussed...
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. This is not going to be taken out of context.
You stated, in fact, all these topics, other than I can't discuss the custodian because I was not there for that, but these other issues in this letter, you in fact did state.
I never mentioned principal or superintendent.
You most...
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right.
You know, and did, and Mr. Brown, do you also have a letter, did you have that letter sent to Mr. Fogg as to his comments when I actually said to him that he cannot discuss anything further in public, when he continued asking questions about my personal family?
Well, first off, you, you don't have that authority.
No, I don't.
That's right, so you, you can't...
And I was speaking to you only as the chair, and the fact that someone else was listening and through, and continued with comments, he should also have received the same letter. But it seems like I'm the only one that's being held to a certain criteria. When I'm being questioned, no, and I respond, and then...
Let's, let's, let's hold the phone here for a second, just to, to set the stage here. You folks have the authority as a board to make a request of another board member if you choose to. I think, as you know, that board member has no obligation to follow through with that request. There's, it's not a legal matter. It's, it's a request and an expression by the rest of the board regarding conduct. You could spend an awful lot of time discussing and debating and arguing over that, but the action's now been taken, and, and, you know, I'm not entirely sure what the purpose of that is. If, you know, period. So, so, I mean, I think, I think you're, you know, you're at a stage where the board has made a request, made a comment, and the statement that has already been made, and you, you've also had a request to reflect on that, and it's up to you to make a decision as to whether or not you do or do not adhere to the majority of the board's request. Period. That's it.
No, and the statement is that everything I said is honest and above-bought. I'm being bullied and harassed, and I will not stand for it, and I'm not going to back down so that anyone thinks I've done anything wrong.
Okay.
Period.
We're done. We're done.
We're done with that. Okay, um, let's see. Charlie? Is there any other new business? Other than, I would like to state that any of these, the comments that board member Macedo has made are her personal comments and do not represent the board. I would make a motion that we remove Mrs. Macedo from all committees. I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Posed? I will also make a motion, um...
Steve, if you could slow down, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we create a non-public committee. And as part of that non-public committee, that would be appointing myself, Vice Chair Searle, Mr. Fogg, and Mr. Olet to be on the non-public committee.
Do you, I believe you might need to cite under the RSA 91 what, what the purpose for that non-public committee would be.
So that the non-public committee can, can report back to the board what is discussed in non-public session.
Well, the full, the, if you're going to report, have a non-public committee, the non-public committee is going to be, have the exclusive information concerning what happens in non-public.
And this is what we'd be basically reporting.
But you wouldn't necessarily then report that if it was to, if they're going to report it back to the full board, then what's the purpose of having the non-public committee?
Well, then, if you're suggesting that we don't have to, is to, you know, is to the matter, like, as it's stated here under non-public session, that's what we would say we would report.
Well, what would happen would be if you had a non-public committee that was established, then once you, then when the board chose to go into non-public session, only that committee would do it and would make the determinations that took place in non-public session in the non-public committee.
Correct.
And though, and would make a decision whether or not the minutes of that meeting were or were not to be sealed or not.
Right.
See?
Right.
So, okay.
That's what it does.
All right, I see. I'll second the motion just for discussion for a second. And the discussion, I think, that was, would be important is, I don't believe that if Ms. Macedo chooses to stay on the school board, I don't believe there's anything that we would want to discuss in non-public that could fairly be kept from Ms. Macedo's knowledge. I think Ms. Macedo, if she chooses to stay on the school board, what happens in non-public? Now that I start to discuss it, I, I do worry about what is discussed in non-public. And then after the non-public sessions happen, what's discussed in public. So I understand your motion, I do second the motion.
So this is assuming that your accusations are accurate, correct? So am I to understand that my rights are being violated, that accusations made are auto... Excuse me, I'm, I'm speaking now. I, I need to finish. I don't disrespect you. So this is assuming that these accusations, because you have friends agreeing to it, that are automatically, they are factual. So the accusations that, the same statements I'm making, that I was attacked about a personal matter and confidential student information was discussed, that it's being held over my head, that I'm the one that's being harassed and bullied and being told to keep my mouth shut on the board. So only that way will I be able to have allies. And I'm the one being told that this is the most vicious board that there ever was. And that I have no allies, and they're all going to work together to make sure I get off the board. And they're going to do that together. And this is coming to pass. And I'm the one that's going to sit here, and these accusations are made, and you're telling me I have no recourse, that it's fact. It's fact that Mr. Fogg corners me in the, in the room and then tells me that he has knowledge of my family that he's going to use. It's fact that he is also following my, my children. It's fact that he's taking pictures. It's fact that he's speaking to a toon officer about confidential student information.
Folks, the only, the only fact that I know is that this is a distraction from the business of the school.
It's been a distraction. So when it was a distraction before...
Let me finish, please.
Absolutely.
Let me finish. My point was going to be with respect to the non-public committee.
Yes.
You know, as you know, I, I think in this office, in Attorney Loman's letter, my partner, Attorney Loman's letter, also highlighted the fact that, under the law, when the board goes into non-public session, if any board member violates non-public session, it's a violation of their oath of office.
Right.
That is a, as a violation of their oath of office, that subjects that board member to removal on a petition before the Superior Court. There are serious ramifications for violating the confidences that take place in non-public session. Non-public session is a complicated business. Some of the information that occurs in non-public session comes from, only in non-public session. Some of it comes from general knowledge that's obtained in the community, and people are having conversations about it outside this meeting and outside the board. Which, to the extent possible, you want to minimize when it's dealing with confidential information concerning students, confidential information concerning employees and their, their rights. You know, it's incumbent upon everybody in the district to try and respect that confidentiality and to respect the rights of those students to their confidentiality and to respect the confidentiality of issues concerning personnel matters. Now, if that is, if there's a clear violation of that, there is a remedy that's available in the law for a removal proceeding. And I just want to remind the board of that. And that's one of the things that I think that was discussed by Attorney Loman. And, you know, I, I think you just need to recall that when deciding, what is the efficacy of a, of a policy where you're setting up a committee for non-public session? Typically, those kind of subcommittees might be established if there was a particular issue that involved a member of the board and there was a potential conflict. So you would ask someone to recuse themselves from participation because there was a direct conflict involving a member. All right? And then that would be a subject that would be submitted to a, you know, a smaller committee of the board. But to overall say, on a, on a broad basis, we're going to have a subcommittee concerning non-public, I think you have the authority to do that. Think about the structure. You have four members on that committee, what do you do with tie votes? You know, there's a, there's a rhyme or reason to the lawyer reason why you have three-member subcommittees, three-member, or non-members of a board so that you can make decisions to move the business of this to go on. So I just throw those considerations out for you as you, if you put this, these are, you know, new to me. I knew that, you know, these are new issues to me. But I'm here to try and address them as best I can, and I just throw those issues out for your consideration.
Well, the question is, that meeting was sealed, non-public sealed. So how did that information come out?
I'm sorry, I don't know what, what, what meeting you're talking about, what meeting...
The meeting Mr. Fogg is referring to on April 3rd.
Yeah.
That was non-public sealed. The letter from Attorney Loman that references that, that meeting, the non-public sealed minutes. How is that information available if they were, it was non-public sealed and it was the five of us in that meeting? So obviously, it came out of one of the other four board members. And why isn't that being addressed? How did it come out of that?
Well, if I could address your point, yeah. None of the concerns that I'm raising happened during a non-public session. We adjourned a non-public session.
Correct.
And people were leaving the room.
Mm-hmm.
Bob, you and I had no conversation at that point, but instead you went to Bonnie and started talking about...
That is not true. That is not true.
Okay, well, that's...
No, actually, the conversation, as you came around, as you continued asking questions about my family...
All right, we've already been down this road, and...
It's not true.
It's over. We've already discussed it, it's done.
All right. Just, just, my point is...
Well, Mr. Chair, point of order. You allowed him to throw me under the bus, but you're not allowing me to tell the truth. When Mr...
No, wait a minute. Point, no, point of order, okay? I was there. I heard you make these statements out after the meeting, and I...
To you. I didn't...
No, no, you told it to all three, and all three of us heard your statement.
As you're walking out the door.
As far as the topic that you're talking about, that...
Yes.
In the, you're the one who brought it up to these other board members when you asked the administration to leave the room.
Yes.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Then you brought up the comments that were in a non-public sealed, and you distributed that non-public sealed information to the members of the board. Three of them were not there at the time.
Okay.
So you were the one who distributed sealed, non-public information.
I didn't distribute any sealed minutes. What I did was, okay...
You certainly did, you told them.
I have the same right to respond.
Just trying to get a really calm down.
Okay. When we joined the board, Mrs. Colbach, you're behind the camera, when we joined the board, our chair...
She's not part of the discussion.
Okay. When we joined the board, we were brought up to task on all the sealed minutes and anything that was, anyone was working on at that point in time. So we would be brought up, up to today's date, as to what we were dealing with, correct? These were sealed minutes that you and I were made privy to. They discussed everything that was going on in the school that had, that wasn't sealed minutes. They told us what was happening. They explained all the legal issues. These were all in non-public sealed minutes. They wanted us to be up to date on what was going on so that when we move forward, we have the information. When we went into non-public on 4/3, there was something brought up that actually, in the SAU board meeting prior to that, that Ann Walsh brought up and made that statement.
I don't...
This was brought up, well, no, I want the truth.
Well, where's your, no...
Here's my point. It was brought up to...
You're out of order.
How am I out of order?
Because now you're discussing people's names and saying, stating that is true. And that's, and there's no proof of that. So we're, we're done with this discussion. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Are you all set, then?
I would, for the sake of making it a logical board, committee, I would ask to be removed from consideration to sit on that committee. So it would be an odd number of board members on the committee.
I don't recall, or anybody, or anybody asking you to do it.
I'm asking you, because you were naming board members who you would assign to the committee, I'm asking to have my name removed from that assignment so that, that there could be no misunderstanding of, well, so there couldn't be a tie vote.
Well, I think, I think, you know, that'll be dealt with if it comes down to that. But I don't, didn't hear, I'm not requesting that, so, so I was unconcerned, my motion is, my motion.
Well, then I would have to withdraw my second only because I, I, I see the unworkable side of it, where it could possibly come down to a tie vote if no business is conducted. Go ahead.
Well, are we, are you talking about the four, four-member committee, non-public committee?
Yes, I believe that's what we're talking about.
So we're going to continue with that? Is that what you're saying, Steve?
Yes, that's my motion.
I'm withdrawing my second.
No, I'm, I'm going to actually go with the attorney and say that I'd rather not have a tie vote.
Well, now, Ralph, Lom wants to...
Is it necessary to do this?
Well, after the last meeting, I, I have some great grave concerns if we don't. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it's clear that, you know, we all heard what Mrs. Macedo said. And she was divulging non-public information.
Absolutely not.
She was discussing students, she was discussing teachers, she was discussing administration outside of a non-public meeting. And she was having her way with all of them.
No.
I mean, as the conversation that Mrs. Searle made about the, you know, about the students. Yeah, I, I have some grave concerns, as we all witnessed, the non-public information being talked about freely. So I, you know, I have a grave concern. And that's...
What exactly was in non-public that was talked about outside of non-public? What was in non-public session?
Yeah, you talk about non-public stuff.
Exactly, exactly. So, and that's what I'm saying. There was nothing that was discussed in non-public that was discussed outside of non-public.
If you, if you discuss issues concerning students, staff, or administration in a non-public forum, and you're talking about the performance of people's jobs, then I believe that's not the right thing to do.
It has to be done. Any, any conversation about students, staff, administration must be done in non-public.
I agree with that.
Period.
I do, too.
And as we witnessed after the last meeting, that's clearly exactly opposite of what happened. Because there was, Mrs. Macedo was talking about certain students, she was talking about certain staff, and she was talking about certain administrators.
After the meeting.
After the meeting, which is not in a non-public meeting. And that's the concern...
So, speaking as a private citizen, as you did in the Budget Committee, that...
That's right.
You're right, as a private citizen, you're not discussing anyone's name, but you're making reference to people, that's different.
You were discussing names.
No.
Yeah, oh, you absolutely did.
No, you brought...
He did. You, you mentioned names.
Okay.
Specific, specific people. That's the problem.
So, that's my concern.
The issues that were in those non-public sealed minutes, no one outside of that meeting should have had any information unless one of you discussed it outside that meeting. Because I didn't bring anything out from that meeting regarding that handbook.
I think, I think what, what you're referring to, I think maybe someone reported you as you, you distributed sealed, non-public information to the superintendent.
Distributed in, in what way? And what did I give? Show it to me.
Show it.
What did I, what did I distribute? You're accusing me of something, what did I distribute? What was the paper? What did I give you for non-public minutes?
What are you, I don't...
What I'm saying is that the reason the administration was asked to leave because out of respect, they were not in the non-public sealed minutes prior, they should not have been privy to the information then.
But that topic you brought up after you asked them to, to remove themselves...
Yeah.
Was sealed, non-public information that you distributed to the rest of the, to the new board members.
I distributed, no, I told them...
To the new board members who were not in that meeting.
The same way...
So you, so you're the one who put out sealed, non-public information.
Steve, you explained to them also what was in there.
Oh, I'm upset, I didn't, no, I did not.
No, 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 no. It's the same way we were brought up to date on sealed minutes when we joined the board so that they knew. When, when we were asked, what, what is it, why are we make, why are we voting this way? We were brought up to all legal issues from non-sealed minutes when we joined the board. It was the same thing, was bringing them up to task.
I was, I have, please, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, Ms. Macedo, I am a board member, and I was not brought up to date on sealed minutes. We were told that they had been done by the old board, yourself included, Mr. Rooning, and Ms. Olympia, and was it, I don't know if it was Mrs. Colbach or Mrs. Neeson, and that you had all confirmed that whatever was in them was okay, and that we would be told that we would be let on to know what was in them if, if the need arose.
Right. And the need arose at that point to make a decision regarding something we were looking at. Absolutely. And the need arose, and you wanted to know why there were changes made.
I guess I have a concern that I don't know what gave you permission to speak of sealed minutes without going and having them unsealed first.
I will, I will say this with respect to those sealed minutes and a new board coming on. I mean, the proper procedure would be for the full board to consider whether or not those minutes were unsealed for the rest of the board to consider. And no one board member has any authority to, with respect to sealed minutes. And, and I don't know all the facts, you know, you, this is going back, back and forth. And I don't know the facts, but I will just... I don't know the facts, but I will just say this, that as a matter of good practice, that would be the way in which new board members would be brought up to speed, if you will, on prior information. If there was information in those sealed minutes, the full board would have to consider whether or not at a full board meeting in non-public, whether or not to unseal those minutes for the purpose of review in order to find out what the prior board had done.
With all due respect, sir, that didn't happen in the situation.
And this hasn't happened ever in the Wakefield School Board?
I have no idea.
But that, that's the way, that's the way, that's the way, you know, we would recommend that it be done in the, in the future, so.
Okay. And in the past, it has never been done, and that's the way we were treated, and that's what I was advised to do, to bring them up to speed when necessary.
Those minutes were never unsealed.
Well, I guess we're gonna need to go back to the SAU board meeting too that was brought up then, to the whole board.
All right. My mo, do you have my motion up?
Your motion was to create a non-public committee made up of Mr. Ovett, Ms. Seer, Mr. Fogg, and yourself.
I think Mr. Fogg withdrew his mo, or his second.
Yes.
I did. I opened it to anyone else if one had a second. I just, I, I can already hear, so I, I think that in the interest of removing myself from any resemblance of a conflict of interest, I think I would be best to have that committee.
Well, I don't see the conflict.
I don't either, but.
You know, and I don't, I didn't hear anyone else asking you to do that, so.
But a three-board, a three-member committee is more logical than a four-member committee.
Well, that's totally up to you. I think we could probably deal with that if the.
You would need to change, you would need to amend your motion.
I need to understand a little bit more. So you're saying this three-member committee would be for non-public session, he'll know nothing if he stays out of that? I disagree with that.
That would leave us two board members without knowing anything, and I don't know if that would be in the best interest of the district. Although I am concerned that we may have been, may sometimes be brought into situations where we are absolutely confused and feel that we may be liable for certain things that we hear that we have no control, that that's what we're, that's what we're going into non-public for, and you hear things and you are absolutely horrified with what comes out, and you feel like you are put at a point that you may be held liable. I do not, I don't think that it should just be three of us knowing what's going on. I don't think it's in the best interest of the Wakefield School District.
May I, Mr. Chair? One of the things that you might want to consider is, you don't have the luxury of counsel at typical meetings, but superintendents do, do attend a lot of sessions at which counsel trains us. And one of your options might be to have included me. I requested to not be removed from that non-public session, and you would not have had to disclose the non-public minutes. You could have said, the reason that you have been asked to leave is so that we can have a discussion of non-public minutes, and then I would have advised that that's a decision that needs to be made by the full board. You would have had the opportunity, not a formally trained and licensed legal advice, but you would have had the opportunity for at least professional advice. And that's something that you might want to consider in the future.
Absolutely.
The other thing is to think about, you know, board, board training around these things as well. I mean, you know, they're, they're complicated laws, and I'm not trying to make work either for me or for the superintendent, but there are, you know, the School Boards Association can do it for gratis. But, you know, there are complicated things, and I hear worried concern about liability, and that worries me from a standpoint. If you're acting in good faith on behalf of the citizens, following your best instincts, whatever they are, and you're acting in good faith and you're following your obligations and your oath of office, and you're acting within the scope of your office, there is protection available for the board. And that's what we tell all boards. Make certain that you're acting in good faith at all times, that you are acting within the scope of your board, which is that no board member individually has any authority whatsoever. You can only act when you're, you can only act and you can only have authority and be cloaked with the authority of the board if you're in a public meeting or in a non-public meeting or specifically tasked by the board with a request to take some action. For example, the chair can be delegated to sign legal documents in certain instances, or that the superintendent could be delegated as well to sign those legal documents. But if there's specific authority given to somebody that's asked to do something on behalf of the board, then they're cloaked with that authority as well. So when you're doing that, don't, please don't overly fear liability, okay? All right? Because, because, you know, it's hard enough to get folks to serve on boards nowadays, as you all know. I mean, it's a thankless task, you do an awful lot of work, and, and it's complicated enough, so, so don't, don't feel that your, every vote is going to be subjected to some second guessing on the part of others.
Well, go ahead.
I was just wanting to ask the administration whether or not there was a majority of the board members that asked you to remove yourselves from that room, or was it just one board member that asked you to remove yourselves from that room?
Well, I'll have to go with my recollection, which is less than perfect. My recollection was, the request was to go into non-public session to discuss the support staff handbook. I said the support staff handbook is a public document. I'm not sure under what RSA you would be going into non-public session to discuss a public document. And furthermore, since it's a document that's developed by the administration, I'm not understanding why you would not want to have the administration present. And certainly, the request initially came from Viv, but my understanding from the rest of the board, I would say non-verbally, was, was that I should leave. So I, I felt that it was the desire of the entire board, that certainly the board, no one voiced that they didn't want me to leave. I expressed my concern that it was problematic, and I've heard no one supporting my opinion, so I left.
I think, Mr. Chair, next time anything like that arises, we should all.
We will not allow that to happen ever again. I mean, I was a little bit confused because I was like, what is going on here? Oh, you, oh, you, get out.
No, 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 no. I said, Steve, there's a concern here, and I, I pointed to it, just like the notes you were writing back and forth about different meetings. When we had a concern that we need to discuss in non-public that shouldn't affect anyone's reputation, that's the reason we discussed it in non-public.
But.
It's the same way when we were in non-public at the SAU and someone brought it up, it was so that people were aware of decisions we needed to make and why.
Mr. Fogg, you asked me to amend my motion?
Well, first you'd have to withdraw. After I withdraw my second, you'd have to withdraw your motion or make an amendment to it, seek a second for your amended motion. I think that's proper procedure.
What do you, I.
To a three-member committee. I would, if I was in your shoes and I felt necessary to have a non-public committee formed, my motion would be amended to reflect a three-member, non-public committee.
And no one wants to do a three-member, so.
I personally.
I mean, I agree with that, but, you know, it's the problem that we have at hand.
You could certainly bring this forward in the future as well. I mean, the fact that you're considering it now, I mean, you know, sometimes a discussion on these issues can have a, a positive effect on going forward. And if you leave the water that's gone under the bridge behind you and move forward with a new understanding of what everybody's obligations are, in my experience is that that's sometimes a real positive way of, of moving on. And, and if that's not satisfactory, then you could reenter, reconsider the idea in the future, if there was anything else. Just, just a thought.
Steve, I'd like to table that, then, if we could.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm in. It's just like Bob Moth, automatic. Not an issue.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, may I ask a question? Now, I have the right to legal representation, correct?
For what?
For false accusations.
That's a personal issue in terms of personal, personal matters. It's not a board issue.
It's not personal, it's because of serving on the board.
Well, that's, it's, it's a board matter. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a board matter, if you, you know, I've never been, well, I've seen many boards that get along marvelously, but I know that there are many boards in the state, unfortunately, that don't. There are, you know, frequently disagreements between board members. If, if everyone in the board had an opportunity to get a legal counsel on the back of the district, every time there was a disagreement on the board, there'd be no education in there to beat the Lawyer's Full Employment Act. So, you know.
This is more than, than just accusations. This is, this is breaking the law. I'm being accused of something that other board members are doing as well as personnel, and I'm the only one that's being pointed out.
As I said, there are two ways to proceed from where you are right now. One is forward and one is to rehash the past. And it's up to everyone to make a decision which way.
Well, how can you move forward if you've got these accusations out and that people believe it when you have no proof? You know, getting together because you have an ulterior motive, that's not proof. I mean, I can, I can issue that same letter to two other board members.
We already hashed this over as far as we're gonna get tonight, so, moving on.
So I can request that letter be sent to other board members, correct? With my same, the letter that I was sent, I can request that that be sent to other board members, and I can state all the facts of what was said to me and how I was threatened. I can do that.
What letter? I don't know what you're talking about.
No, the letter that Steve is reading, these accusations about speaking in non-public, the accusation about speaking out of non-public. So there were other board members involved in, there were other board members involved in the conversation, there were other board members making accusations, there were other board members trying to hold children over my head, so that I made a decision.
All right, wait a minute.
And so I would expect that letter would be sent out too?
It's done, it's over.
I'm not gonna be the only one.
Once again, the comments of Mrs. Macedo's are her personal comments and are not representative of the board. Let's see, we've done minutes.
Are we gonna do the minutes of the fourth meeting? We sold a couple minutes. More minutes, but we needed to have a look at.
Good. Are we all set with?
There, there is, there is something relating to personnel matters and on the agenda, and I have not been informed about what that is, so I'm not sure what personnel matter there could be that had not gone through the administration. So if there is not a personnel matter, then I say no reason for counsel. If there is a personnel matter and it hasn't been through the administrative process, then I would suggest that we still need counsel because I think that would be a problem.
You asked to have that put on.
No, you can take it off. I'll take a different avenue. I don't think it's relevant at this time.
Then I don't, then I would defer to you. I don't have any other thing I anticipated, Mr. Grandpore.
I don't see anything else. Does anybody else see anything other than that we would need, that we don't want counsel to go?
Okay, folks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. What, yeah, we want to go back to the note.
So we have.
Yeah, well, we took care of the 3-6, man, we got the 4-3 minutes.
We also have the March 20th minutes. We were waiting for the, we, we were asked for the in and out of non-public. And there was also some corrections, but I didn't receive them in my packet. Did anyone else receive them? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
So we took care of the 3-6.
We did.
And what about, I'm sorry, I was trying to.
3:20, we were asked by Mrs. Colbach about what time we went into non-public and out of non-public, and then there were corrections made, but I didn't receive a copy of the.
Corrected, amended minutes?
I did not.
Yeah, I didn't receive them either.
Okay, so I, can I make a motion to table the March 20th minutes until they can be amended?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, you want, these are the non-public 4-3, and these are sealed.
3:20, 3:20?
Those are sealed.
Are we able, okay.
Do it non-public?
Yeah, we should probably do that in non-public, okay. So, how about the April 3rd minutes?
I would need to vote on the motion to table the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there was, you were second.
Yep.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yeah, we did that.
I thought we did.
We did it twice, just for good measure. I'll make a motion to approve the April.
Now, what's the count? Four to one.
Okay, one, four to one. Second, closer.
Those were sent and corrected, so.
They were sent and corrected?
Yep, they were.
So it's four to one on the April 4th minutes.
On the 3:20 minutes.
3:20. The tabling of 3:20.
On the 3:20 minutes, there was an issue that we were, there were corrections.
I thought we already voted on that.
We just did.
We voted to table.
But, and I thought we were just voting on the 4-3, April 3rd minutes.
No, I haven't gotten there yet.
I was preparing to make a motion to approve the minutes as written for April 3rd.
I second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Aye.
Four to one.
These are your minutes, right, Bill?
Yeah.
And you don't approve them?
You're taking a vote on the 3:20, on the tabling.
No.
And I have the 4-3, the 4-3 approved. So that's 5-0 on the April 3rd. It is. Thank you, Mr. Fogg.
Do you still have your agenda? Do you still?
No, but you can use mine.
Are we gonna make a motion to, can I make a motion to accept the non-public minutes from March 20th? Or do we have to do that in non-public? We just did public, not non-public.
We did the non-public, the last meeting.
No, it was not approved at the last meeting. It states here in the first paragraph, review of public and non-public minutes of March 20th are tabled until the next board meeting. So I, I would make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from March 20th.
Just second that.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that 5-0 or?
Opposed, 3-2. 3-6, we did the 4-3. Public comment. Sandy?
We have like the chain of command, if you had allegations or where is your chain of command that you want the chain of command to?
The same as everyone else's.
That's what I thought. And the other thing is, because you ended the non-public and you walked out and Viv was talking about people in the hallway, the reason it's a no-no is because there was a coroner present, correct?
Well, it's.
But there wasn't a coroner. But there wasn't a quorum.
One, two, three, four.
No, I was actually walking out with Steve Ralph Hapnby behind me. There was two... There were three of us. But I wasn't addressing anyone else. Someone overhearing a conversation between me and the chair is not addressing a quorum or discussing with a quorum. And the same token, the same thing should be of Mr. Fogg because the conversation continued. And it was... And he came at me with discussions about non-public, but that's not referred to. So, we have one set of rules for one person, one for another.
Honestly, playing the victim just doesn't help me, so...
No, it's not the victim.
It might be okay for the public that you play the victim, but everyone that knows you and everything you've done to everybody else in this community town, it'll be bad.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Go.
I just have a little suggestion, putting the public present on the last two minutes that they did. Naming the public that was present wasn't on the minutes. I don't think it's gonna change your accepting minutes.
Do you normally do that, Deb? Yeah, could you normally... We've asked people to sign that they have...
Thank you for the recommendation.
And one other thing. Jumping to academics, how's Saturday school going?
We haven't had any Saturday school lately. The 7th grade team has done a great job of getting on top of kids and making sure the work gets in. We haven't had Saturday school, let's say, in, I don't know, six weeks?
Fantastic.
Yeah, it's really good. I think it's done its job.
Great, thank you.
Liz, sorry?
I don't know where you are on the agenda because I thought you did correspondence just now. Are you on number six?
She's number six.
Yeah, we're on.
I was thinking, and if you've done this before I came, I apologize, but when you were talking about all committees last night, the money for the purchase of your additional parking space and stuff is gonna be yours on July 1st. And I think it would be a very good idea if you established another committee to have that already planned or what you're gonna do with the mobile pin and to have the landscaping ideas so that the machinery can start on July 1st.
Is that building, facilities?
I would say facilities.
Facilities.
So, that... Would you suggest also, Liz, that that would be under Facilities Committee? Is that the proper...
Oh, it could be.
Most commonly, a Facilities Committee, and I should've thought of this last time, commonly would be called Facilities and Grounds. Typically, the group that handles the facilities also handles the grounds, so I think that's a logical place for it.
Yeah, there's a common connection to them. You go on the Facilities, do you have an issue with that?
No, thanks for the reminder.
Absolutely, we're involved.
And, well, it is... I mean, all business, so I guess we do. But we need to appoint people to the State Bruce's School Committee, which I meant to do last meeting, but I would think if we thought we'd do that on the Transportation, we can take that up. Is there any correspondence, Steve?
Before we leave that topic...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I just wasn't quite sure if we were finishing correspondence and then going to public comments.
No, no, we're still on public comment. I'm sorry, I missed you.
No, no, that's okay. I was just trying to wait my turn. My name's Elizabeth Hasmon, the president of the Wakefield Education Association. I believe I know everybody in this room. I'm here... I normally would've done this a little bit differently, but just because of the timeline and the time that I received information, I decided this was the best way to address this. I need to inform the board of a bad decision that was made by administration in regards to the non-renewal of a teacher, and...
With all due respect, if there's a question about the performance of the administration that should come to the administration before it comes to the board, this is the first I've heard of it.
And I did, you know, speak to Jerry, and the letter that I have is addressed to Jay... To Steve via Jay.
May I... You know, it is the suggestion, and it is proper procedure to go to the chain of command, so if you have an issue, you really need to go to the chain of command first.
And that's what I'd like to do, is just to present this to Jay, which is addressed to you courtesy of Jay.
Not on a school board meeting. This is a school board meeting. This is not an administrative meeting. If we have a meeting, we can have it in my office, we can have it here. But the purpose of having a chain of command is that you follow one step at a time. Bringing a request to the administration at a school board meeting undermines the intent and the function of the chain of command.
And that was not...
I would be more than happy to meet with you at our earliest joint convenience.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming that Mr. Gregoire has had his opportunity to meet with you. If that's the case, then I'd be happy to meet with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it on public comment? Correspondence, Steve?
What I had under correspondence, I'm not sure fits there anymore, because what I was gonna do, and I only brought one copy because it was so simple, was to hand out the list of committee assignments that you made last time. But you made a motion that changed the committee assignment, so I don't know whether you wanna make some changes to those committees at this point or under committee reports. I don't know how you wanna handle that, but you have changed some committee structures, and they need to be finalized.
Do we... Do you wanna table this till the next meeting so people can...
We're gonna have to do that.
See if people can step up...
You had a timeline for this, Jay? This information?
I don't have any objection to tabling it for two weeks, and we'll bring it back and put it on the agenda as an agenda item at that point.
All right. Better with you?
Yeah.
You do.
Thank you.
All right. The curriculum coordinator's report.
I have copies. Mary has been up to her elbows trying to get grants completed, and she asks your apology that it's coming out at the meeting. We know, we all know that it's better for you and better for the public if you get these in advance, so you have a chance to read them. I would like to tell you that I think Curriculum Coordinator Wilson has really done a good job coming in as someone who was not known by people in the district. I think she has... I believe she has the respect of the teachers. I hope so. Maybe I should've asked them before I said that, but I believe that people feel like she's really contributing, and certainly Mr. Gregoire has expressed that to me. And I think we're gonna... We've got no place to go but up with her as a team member, working with our teachers. I think it's an effective team.
That's good news.
And I'm sure that if that's not correct, someone will let me know, and I hope they
As far as the math committee?
Yep.
Is there anything from Scholastic? The company Scholastic, are they providing any...
We've solicited... It seems like countless, it seems like countless, and we certainly can count them. We certainly have solicited a number of publishers for that, and we are getting very close to making a decision. And we'll be talking about that here in the coming weeks. Right now, we're down to two, and we had a presentation just before our last board meeting for Math and Focus, which is one of our, you know, top runners, I think, at this point, and hopefully we'll have a decision very soon. We may move forward in making that recommendation and purchase. My goal would be to make a purchase before the fiscal year starts for us, before July, so I can send teachers home with the teachers' copies, so they're not getting it in mid-August to start preparing their lessons for late August. But the goal would be to start that pretty quickly.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify something since you raised it about math. In Mary's report, she refers to Singapore math. Singapore math, the country of Singapore, a number of years ago, they have national curriculum. Thankfully, we don't have that. They have national curriculum, and the country was looking at the existing math curriculum around the world, and they didn't find anything they liked. So, they decided to develop their own curriculum. They developed such curriculum, and the performance of Singapore students is significantly outdistances United States students in international math assessments. But we are not proposing to implement the Singapore math program. Singapore math was developed by Singapore, and subsequently, curriculum developers in the United States took some of the concepts and some of the approaches that were developed in Singapore and have developed an American version that's more consistent with our needs. So, it's not actually that title of Singapore math is not the correct title. It's shorthand. People refer to it as Singapore math because it's derived from Singapore math, but it's not. It's an American adaptation of some ideas that were developed in Singapore. So, I just wanted to make sure people understand that that's what it is.
To get back to... I saw on the news that as part of the Scholastic program, they teach the redistribution of wealth as a good idea. I have a problem with that, so I don't, you know...
Scholastic isn't one of the programs we're looking at right now.
So, we're not gonna be redistributing the wealth around the school at all?
We won't be teaching it.
So, that was a concern that...
Collective sigh of relief.
Fair enough.
Anybody have any questions? What's that? Student Services Report. Anybody have any questions on the Student Services Report?
It's the Call to Special Education Report up on the...
Anybody have any questions? Who's that?
The only question I have is, when kids are heading to ninth grade, are you the guy that's dealing with placement, what high school kids are heading towards? Is that your job?
Depends on the student. For your students who are going to Spalding High School, your Wayfield Coordinator covers those students. If those students are going to...
Wakefield Curriculum Coordinator?
No, 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 Special Education Coordinator in the building. Transition those students. If those students are going to Kingswood, which doesn't happen very often, or to some other specialized placement, then I take care of those.
Will you be part of the team that's heading to Spalding to talk about the student population heading that way?
No, that's the coordinators and the case manager. And they've already begun doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
What we try to do is the annual IEP review meeting for their eighth grade year, that will happen at Spalding, and so they can meet their teachers about any issues that students may have, and hope that their transition is smooth.
Thank you.
What's that? Administrative update.
Do you want to give us a report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Principal's report. Sorry.
What's the principal's report? Tonight, as facilities... The first few pages are for non-public, as those have to do with bids around the well. It's the last two pages. It's the last two pages. Just giving you an update. One titled Central Mechanical.
Mr. Chairman, the opening of bids typically happens in public, but if you want to have discussion of bids, I believe that the discussion of bids can be in non-public as your... Because they're negotiations. So, I just wanted to let you know that the opening and the bids themselves are public documents, but if you don't want to discuss the merits of the various bids in public, I believe you have the option to do that in non-public because it's negotiations.
Right. I think that's what I think...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were clear on that.
So, the one titled Central Mechanical, a fan that has died on us in the primary wing, the fan is what exhausts all of the fans... Excuse me. Are all the exhausts in the bathrooms in the elementary wing? So, several bathrooms in the hallway and multiple bathrooms in the classrooms, that needs to be replaced. Otherwise, we'll have a pretty significant air quality issue, as you can imagine. The price to replace that is, as you can see, near the bottom, is priced to install one new exhaust and curb it after $1,412. I just wanted to keep the price of that. On the very last page, Lakes Region Septic Service, with the new security upgrades that are gonna be happening, we're gonna... There's going to be... We do not want to have people coming in and out of the building after hours with the rec department programs outback with baseball, softball, soccer, these things that are happening. In the past, people wanted to use the bathroom, you know, knocking on the door, banging the door until one of the custodians comes down to let people in. The request with custodians right now, and I support, is to have two porta-potties outside to split that cost with the rec department at a cost of $75 per unit per month. For us, that would be about $300 between now and October to have these porta-potties out there. So, that request right now... Excuse me, $300 for next year and $150 for this year for us. So, the request would be to have those bathrooms, those porta-potties authorized outside, and again, to split that cost with the rec department. They have two. And again, we don't have... We didn't have that figured into the budget, and that, you know, is one issue.
Is it six months?
Count my fingers.
Well, when do you...
May, June, July, August, September, October.
Can you explain the bottom line?
Can I explain the bottom line? The four rental discounted $75 or $150 per month?
Discounted... The way it's worded, it almost seems like it's discounted at $75.
What I've been... My understanding is it's $75 per unit for two units for $150. That's how it was explained to me.
All right, because it is a little... It almost seems like it's supposed to be $75.
I think it's seventy... Again, I think it's $75 for, yeah, for the Paul School, $75, but it's two units, so we're also looking at $150 total.
And where are these going?
These would go out by the ball fields. We have to figure the best place to put them.
And how come it says 1-1 at the Town Garage?
That is beyond me, Steve. I'm focused on the Paul School. But I have no idea what the Town Garage has in it, but that's a request from somebody else.
It seems to me there's not a lot of clarity, and I would prefer that we pull this back and bring it back next time and get some clarity with exactly what we're requesting and what the quote is.
Yeah, that's gonna be that for us.
But just for clarification, if this goes forward, Parks and Rec is gonna... It's a total of $900 for the six months. So, the Parks and Rec...
Six months you have?
Well, if it starts in May. May, June, July, August, September, October. So, that would be $900. Parks and Rec would be five and two-thirds months.
Parks and Rec will pay $450, others will pay $400.
Correct. That's the financial cycle, the facilities piece. A couple of nice things that happened over the last two weeks. We had kindergarten registration last week, went very well. I unfortunately had to be at a workshop. Mr. Byrne managed the helm that day, it went very well. People were very happy with it. We moved a lot of kids through here. I appreciate your assistance in allowing us to have kindergarten stay home that day, and that worked out real well. and that worked out really well for us. And again, we've been able to be very effective. And this afternoon, we had our volunteer reception, which Mr. Lett was able to join us at and lots of volunteers and teachers who came out to give their thanks and appreciation to the volunteers who do so much for us here at the Paul School and really make our job easier through all their efforts and, you know, they, again, ranging from anything from reading, but to helping us out of recess to just monitor, monitor the parking lot. So it works very well for us.
My understanding is that there were about fifteen volunteers present and that we have fifty, so for those that weren't able to make it, that are out watching on television, thank you, thank you. We wish you could have been here.
And that's my report. We'll get a piece of mine, hope.
Is there still a possibility of a future school board slash staff administrative meeting?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry that one that we had tentatively scheduled is canceled.
Talk with staff direction to have that meeting. Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion for the Century Mechanical? The fourteen hundred and twelve dollars to repair or to replace with a new exhaust fan and curb adapter? Or to...
I make that motion, I think they need it.
Yeah.
Can I just ask over in the Pull It Room?
Yeah, if you look at your front page and you look at line one hundred, twenty-six, ten, fifty-four, three hundred, it's the second line with the underlining on it, maintenance and repair buildings. You can see currently we have in the, this is from Bob Adams today, we currently have thirty-one, thirty-one and thirty-three cents in that line. We're getting down to bare bones, but we're also getting to the end of the year and I think we're doing pretty well with it.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second. Call and bail.
Hi.
Closed.
Hi.
Four to one. Jerry?
Welcome.
You have my update, which takes us through the end of March, your next board meeting. You will have the April update, which will take you through April, gives you a sense of some of the specific things that we were working on that you wouldn't otherwise be aware of. The administrative team agendas of March thirteenth and March twentieth are included, just so you're aware of what we're working on at the administrative level.
Any questions?
Can I just, I did call your office today and ask about the scholarship essays. Have you gotten both of those?
Today I was able to find out who the right contact is in Spalding. I have the contact at Kingswood.
Wonderful.
So now that I have the contacts, I was hoping to get that out to them today, but preparation for the meeting, it will go out tomorrow because I now know exactly who needs to get them.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I just add, under administration, one of the things that we always deal with, you see, and I'll come back to you. You always see on the administrative team agendas is addressing emergencies and we take the opportunity whenever there are crises to have discussions. So we took the opportunity, actually yesterday, when Mr. Byrne was here running the building, that I came up and we had a couple of discussions that were, that led from the events that occurred in Boston. And so without going into details, there were a couple of different scenarios that we talked about. We met with, we met with one group in the building to talk about how we would handle potential psychological scarring if we were in a situation like that. We met with another group in the school to talk about how we would handle a mass casualty event and where we would set up triage, how we would handle something along those lines. So I just wanted to let you know that we always cover those things in our administrative team, but we cover them doubly when there is some specific thing that we can respond to and say, what if this had been in Wakefield or what if some component of this affected Wakefield? And I want to thank Mr. Byrne and the team in the school for being available when I just sort of dropped in and said, okay, we're going to talk about this now. And did you want to add something?
I just, I know that Kingswood was mentioned, but I was asked to make sure that St. Thomas was also included in the posting.
Okay, thank you. I will make a note of that because I do not have that in my...
And Brewster. We had a couple students who lived in Wakefield that I had supposed, so.
Oh, that's wonderful because when I did call, they did not say that we had Wakefield students graduating this year.
And maybe we're not, but I was told to make, I was asked to make sure that that was...
That's wonderful.
Thank you. I didn't have those on my radar.
Well, so, excuse me, that reminds me, which got to tie into this, there was an alert now sent out, I believe a short while ago.
Oh, yeah.
There were two students who were from the school, who were down in Boston, and apparently they were standing next to someone who was severely injured.
Yep.
So that's what that alert now was all about, just to let you know.
Were they brought into a classroom and it was discussed?
What I'd just explain, what I, the student, I met with a student, Mr. Byrne and I, and several others, met with the parent and student this evening, or this morning, to learn what had happened. Trying to get some clarity on that. We were informed yesterday, but we didn't want to make any notice or send a notification home until we had a real firm understanding of what exactly had happened. After talking with the student and the parent, the student had chosen to address her class, the eighth grade class, so that she only had to present it once, which I supported, so that she didn't have to continuously relive the event with her peers. So we're going to be very curious and concerned. She did a very nice job and with support of her classmates and the teachers, her father and the administration. And then she had a better day. I talked to her pretty quickly and she said she had a pretty good day, but I still think it's, I mean, it was an event that I wanted parents to know about, that we had gone together to talk about that. I did ask the students to maintain her privacy and confidentiality, again, so that this wasn't information that was spread around to the best of our ability. And I have great hope and faith in our school taking care of it.
Thank you. Thanks, Lawrence.
Thank you. Safe routes to school. I do know that we have to appoint someone or I thought it might be a good tie-in for the transportation. I don't know what your feeling is on the poll or anybody else, but there is going to be a meeting May seventh at four o'clock, Board of the Town Hall.
I'd volunteer for that. I don't know the whole background of it. I am interested in learning a lot about it, so I guess the only way to learn anything is sit on the committee or...
You want to do it?
I'll be part of the involvement. I mean, I don't know if you need more than one person.
Two of us go there?
I don't see a problem with you. I mean, it's a town committee, but because it's two routes to school, my understanding they're going to put a sign over Fourth Street, when you make the turn onto Fourth Street, you know, like a sign, you know, slow down, and then there's going to be other signs that's coming into the school and stuff like that. But they're not doing anything with sidewalks or anything, it's just basically signage. So, but that is a town committee. We just, you know, have someone from the board on it.
I'll see you in a while. Yeah, I mean, you probably have access to get there anyways, for me. But I'd like to show up if possible too.
Steve, I mean, the date and time again?
May seventh at four o'clock.
And that's a town hall, Steve?
Town hall.
Conference room, I think there, or a chamber. We normally meet in...
The last meeting that I attended was in Ms. Williams' office.
Okay, the last we attended was in that chamber, so. It's a town hall, which is a way, we so...
Right, yeah. What was that?
Is there a possibility that that date might be chewed up by the S.A.U. joint school board meeting?
No, I don't believe so.
Oh, that's the ninth.
All right. All right. What was that?
The administration will send somebody as well. I don't know who that's going to be.
Right. Was that all one, that was on the agenda for?
Yes.
Okay. All right, no one else? You didn't know anything else?
No.
Paperless board meetings.
Okay, I have some more information on that that Andrew pulled together today. Okay, so the steps would be to determine which board members, if any, would need a laptop. The laptop computer is the recommended technology. Deciding on whether or not to purchase a PC or a Mac. Obviously, there are PC versions that are less costly than Macs, but we could go either way. There's a cost analysis that Andrew has provided. Then we would need board approval to purchase laptops and get back beta configured laptops, distribute them to the board. There's a cost analysis that if all five members needed a PC, the cost of the PC would be, total cost of the five PCs would be about thirty-seven hundred dollars. If the board needed five Macs, the maximum would be six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We identified the savings by determining an estimate of the amount of paper we would save and the amount of postage we would save. The paper and postage came out to eight hundred dollars a year, which if you bought the maximum of five PCs would be a cost return of four point seven years would max, the cost return would be seven point nine years. But I think those costs of return are not completely accurate because there's also a significant amount of additional staff work that goes into organizing the paper, getting it all collated, getting it mailed out. So that is not, the cost of personnel is not included in here and that's really an opportunity cost that we should be keeping in mind. And it's based on a liberal assumption that all five members would need laptops. So I, what I would like to do, since I only have one copy of this, is I would like to ask maybe Mr. Byrne to make copies that we can give to all of you and then you'll have the information so that we can make an educated decision next time.
Is it a fair assessment that maybe the labor, putting all that paper together would be more than the cost of the paper itself?
Oh, certainly more than the cost of the paper. Absolutely. No question. I mean, they're putting, putting it all together and making the copies isn't, if you had nothing else going on and you could just stand at the copy machine and make the copies and then collated, it wouldn't be so bad, but the phone rings, interruptions going back, where was I? There's certainly, you know, certainly probably a couple of hours of staff time in any given meeting and actually that's not including Andrew's time.
The use of the copier too.
Yeah, and the use of the copier. So, yeah, then that's a very conservative estimate of the cost of the paper and the postage. So Mr. Byrne will get those to you. I will add them to my notes for the next agenda and if there's anything else that you would like us to add beyond what's already on there, then please individually feel free to ask and if we can put it together, we'll add it so you have everything you need last time. I know we've had it on a couple of agendas in a row and we're not at a position of making a decision yet, so we'll try to get that moving a little quicker.
Jay?
Yes.
You mentioned that the cost for Macs would be sixty-two fifty. I didn't catch the cost for the PCs, just approximately.
Thirty-seven hundred.
Should we consider also if this was to move forward, would it be logical to ask for one for the secretary? I mean, wouldn't it be as important?
It's certainly not unreasonable. Now, the other thing that we didn't really talk about is I know earlier in the year, Mr. Gregoire, we had, we had some old computers that were, that had very limited value and I don't know whether we have any of those left. It doesn't take a whole lot of computing to get one set of board materials and once we have those laptops, then we can put on links to the policies, we can put on links to New Hampshire state law, we can put on links to all sorts of stuff that you would then have at your fingertips that you don't have now. So it's really, it's not just about replacing what we do now on paper, it's about giving you more information than we're able to give you now. So I think if it can be afforded, it allows you to do your job easier and more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would there be any money in the budget to be able to do something like that or...
Why don't I, why don't I add that is to come up with a, an idea of where we have anticipated funds and how much those anticipated funds are and that way you can make an educated decision about whether or not you want to move some money to do this. So I'll ask Andrew for some proposals of where to get funds from.
Revised floor plan, Support Staff Handbook.
The Support Staff Handbook needs to be updated with the revised floor plan. Have you, did you send that to me? Yeah.
I didn't get it. I thought we didn't.
Okay. So what we need to do is we need to get the revised floor plan and then that will be scanned in and then the document can go online and go to all of you so that we have a finalized document. So that is continuing. We will, there's no reason for that to be on the agenda the next time. We will just report to you that it's done so you don't have to spend more time on it.
Eighth grade field trip.
We have a request for you for, from the eighth grade. Mr. Gregoire, do we have anybody who wants to speak to that or are we just...
Yeah, basically this is our eighth grade trip we've been doing for a couple of years and we wanted to really make something that a lot of these kids couldn't always experience, you know, financially. So we try and really pack it in with a lot of different activities for the kids and a lot of cool educational opportunities and cultural learning opportunities because it's very different. A lot of these kids, you know, for Boston, going to Boston is kind of a culture shock. So we have on our itinerary for the day, doing a duck tour, which is really cool if you've ever been on one of those before, they do a tour around the city in their, the ducks, which were like a World War II amphibious vehicle. So they point out and they give you a lot of history and great kind of stories about the city and they also go in the water, so they go the Charles River and you learn about that as well. Then we've been able to fundraise, we've been really happy about our fundraising efforts. We've been able to raise enough money to pay for every single student and I believe the cost of the trip for students is, not sure, two hundred and ten, including meals and all expenses of the day, the bus and the duck tour, the Blue Man Group and... So we're really excited because, you know, they have the cool double-decker bus, which they really enjoy. That's like one of the best parts of the trip, I think. So they get to ride down in style and they have their duck tour. They also do a lot in social studies and language arts, case on learning about different places in the city and, you know, creating travel brochures and things like that, trying to figure out what they want to see. They work with a small group to design a tour. Each group maybe has about four or five people and an adult chaperone and they kind of design what they want to do, what they want to do. For example, a couple of years ago, we had a kid who was really into boats, like that was just his thing. He loved his ships. So he wanted to do the Constitution, he wanted to see the Tea Party ship and it was cool. So him and his friends got to kind of design the things they really wanted to see. Some people are really into the culture and they want to go to Chinatown and go eat something they've never eaten before and they want to go to the North End and get a cannoli and do those kind of things. So they learn about those places, they design a tour, they take a test that deals with map reading skills and being able to navigate between different areas. And then we decided this year, after doing the Blue Man Group, we usually do dinner... And the Blue Man Group is a really great show. If you've ever seen it, it's really, really great. Even these kids that are a little dubious about... Theater, I don't know what this theater is. They're really into it. It's a great, great experience. And this year, we were lucky enough that the day that worked with availability for a trip, there was a Red Sox game. And a lot of those kids... I mean, I know when I was growing up, my dad would bring me a lot. But, you know, it was a lot cheaper then. And a lot of these kids can't do that.
We were able to secure extremely good seats at an extremely reasonable price. We're in the bleacher seats, which are $28, but they're not in the nosebleeds. The kids will actually be able to sit right at the bullpen area. So, that's an experience that some of us adults don't even get to sit that close. So, that is... We were able to get them at a very reasonable cost.
And we were also able to, you know, throughout some of the fundraising efforts that we did this year, we had students get a set number of points. So, we really wanted to engage everybody in working for their class and working together. And, you know, we said, you know, okay, if you guys can participate in some kind of fundraising activity 10 different ways, you know, we will make sure that your trip is paid for because we have enough money. And also rewarding those students that go above and beyond with spending money. So, at this point, we're really happy that financially we're able to pay for every single student and that, you know, we're able to give them spending money because that was a really big concern for us because we knew there may be students that it was going to be a financial issue. We want to make sure they can come home with a souvenir if they want to. You know, and we feel really good about this trip for the students.
Looks like there's plenty of chaperones.
Oh, yeah, everybody wants to go.
One reason that's put on the agenda for those who just haven't familiarized yourself yet with all the policies is any field trips that happen out of state need to go before the board for approval. So, we give ourselves plenty of notice.
I'll make a motion to approve this field trip.
May I second that?
Motion, second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Right.
Close. Five, all in favor? All right, email, sign up.
Just go on to something else. Just go back to that.
All right, committee reports.
The email, sign up?
Committee reports.
We're preparing a visual for you.
Oh, okay.
Committee reports.
Do we have one?
Comments by the public?
Actually, I have a question now that we're discussing eighth grade trip and with everything that happened with the marathon. Are there going to be any areas that will probably be prohibited from going?
Well, I saw that myself.
I'm sorry, I'm an eighth grade...
I hear your whole question.
This may be a little new, but in light of everything that happened on Monday at the marathon, are there going to be any, you know, places that we will be prohibited from, you know, going to? Or...
I saw that myself.
Are we going to kind of go over and say to the kids about, you know, security measures?
Steve, I think we... Yeah.
I saw that myself, but looking at the date, it's over a month out.
Yeah.
So, you would think... I'm thinking that a month over, a month out, they're probably going to have most everything situated.
Well, I think what we need to do is make sure we're not complacent. We need to keep our eyes on what's happening there. We need to keep our eye on what's happening nationally and determine what we think is going to be best for our students. And taking that being our primary consideration. But also making sure that we still give our students an experience as safe as we possibly can and knowing that, kind of like our building here, we're going to be as safe as we possibly can.
If we had questions, the other approach that I would suggest to Mr. Gregoire that I'm guessing he would conform to, since when I asked him to do something, he does it, is he's very good at that, is if we had a question when it got closed or if another event that occurred, is I would suggest that we contact Wakefield Police Department and ask them to communicate through law enforcement and let them know what our itinerary was and ask whether or not they could get confirmation from law enforcement in the Boston area that that is something they would be comfortable with. Because law enforcement officers are going to talk to each other a little more openly than they talk to us, and I understand that and respect it.
And maybe another suggestion too would be kind of... I mean, the kids are there for a fun day, obviously, and it's terrible that we have to discuss this. But maybe, you know, bringing up some safety measures of getting out without panic or where they should go, where they shouldn't go, subways. You know, I mean, we're from a small town. A lot of these kids have never been in a big city before.
I took a group of kids to Washington DC last year. It had so much concern, you know, just because it is DC. And so, what we had put together as a group of adults, contingency plans, what if? What if transportation were prohibited at any point and we are separated at different spots? What if an event, something happened when we were inside a Smithsonian? What's our rally point? And these are all things we need to take into consideration. And given the recent events and the ongoing events even today, what do we do, what if? And try to come up with the best possible contingency plans should there be some kind of incident.
And, you know, I think I can speak a little bit too. We always do a chaperone meeting before and we try and get everybody on board. And I know this is a little bit unique. But we do go over a lot of the what-ifs. I mean, I always, you know, kind of say... Because I had an experience, my brother came to visit me in college and I was holding the door in the subway and he got on and it closed. And he was 10 years younger than me. So, you know, I always try and think of the what-if situations and go over those with chaperones as well. But I think it will be really helpful, you know, to have Jerry at that meeting that you've done a bigger trip and to talk about some of those safety things as well. But, you know, I feel pretty good about where we are and, you know, because we have those meetings and that communication with the parents, we make sure that everybody is on the same page, you know, safety-wise. And that goes for the big things like this. But, you know, also the smaller things as well. You know, making sure they're not going in any, you know, inappropriate stores or, you know... In evaporate restaurants, yes.
Can I borrow my glasses? Oh, yes.
I would also say we have a very good relationship with the tour company that sets up the trip for us. So, that is... They are constantly in contact with the vendors and things like that. So, it's not just like we pay for the trip and then we're on our own. We have a good relationship with the company that helps us set up the trip. So, that's another avenue that we have to communicate in addition to the police department and all those things if the need arises.
I was just going to say, there may be a contact number at the Boston Bureau of Travel and Tourism that would give you information if something was off limits.
What is it I see here?
I'm wondering if the school board is aware of the fact that in the town report, it shows under the trustee, the trust funds report, money for a generator over $135,000. And we had put it in our warrant last year to give that money back to the town. And I thought that archetaphs. And if it still had it for you, it probably would buy a pretty decent generator that served five years.
I can't see why it wouldn't buy the whole thing, really. $30,000?
They'd buy that, but something like that.
That's pretty... Not even close. Enough for a bullion size.
Put it back out to bed.
We... The administration will follow up on that. And we'll find out what the status of that is and see that it gets to the right people. Goes back to the right people.
Technically, I believe the town people voted to take money away from this.
Yeah. So, we will...
But that article didn't pass. It's still there. It's still there anyway.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I also have one more suggestion and comment to make to administration. I substitute here in the school. And in light of everything that has, you know, security measures that we've had, substitutes get a handbook, which is very helpful and useful. But one concern that I have being in the building, because we recently had a lockdown a week or two ago. For me, it's easy because I know a lot of the children here in the building and I know if I'm missing a student. But my biggest concern was for other substitutes maybe that are here in the building that maybe coming in for the very first time, all of a sudden, they're being run to a lockdown. They don't have... They've only had maybe their children for an hour, hour and a half. They haven't been able to make good note of who they have in their classroom. I know we all have backpacks, but they don't have pictures. I know I was actually one of the substitutes. One of my students ran through the classroom because she didn't know me. And she was afraid to come to me instead of going to someone she knew, which is understandable. But for me, I panicked because I didn't have that student and I didn't really know how to describe her very well. So, I'm just thinking maybe we should come up with some kind of plan that would be helpful or maybe a training of some sort for substitutes so that way they know how to handle a situation like that.
Good suggestion.
Because we don't bring our backpacks to the side rooms with our attendants and, you know, our cards that say we're safe or not safe or whatever. So, you know, my concern, I guess, or suggestion would be come up with some kind of procedure to help people that are new to the building in identifying the children that seem to be with us. Let them... Do we come? I know it was a scary situation for myself when it happened.
Yeah.
Being the first one I've ever witnessed, it was scary.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I have good...
Oh, so?
One other committee the board might be thinking you should be thinking about. They'll need a rep for CIP. They're going to begin that committee again. That's capital improvement. It's a town committee, but there's a rep from the school.
And the planning board is responsible to oversee that?
Correct.
All right. Now, I believe we'll go to the email work.
Okay. So, I don't want to show this to everybody, so I'm just going to describe it. If you go to the SAU 64 website, which is sausixfour.org, and look down the side, it says subscribe to updates. You input your email address and you hit subscribe. And when there's any updates, the website, you'll be notified. Is that what you were looking for? There it is.
And anybody in the public, anybody in town can...
Anybody in the public can subscribe.
Good. Thank you. Is there a fee?
Not yet.
It's a good idea, but not at this time.
All right. We need to approve the manifest.
I make a motion to approve the manifest. Have you had time to... You haven't had time to read it?
I really haven't had a chance to read into...
Has Vivian had a chance to look at it?
Haven't even seen it.
Well, if there's anyone that has, we do have a copy of the auditor's report from last year. I have read it from cover to cover and it speaks very highly of the work of the administration last year. It's a very good report. But I only have one copy. So, if in... One copy here, if anyone would like to take it and review it, it's not something that we need to take action on and it's not something that we're going to sit here for two hours and have you read either. That wouldn't be very practical. But if anyone wants to scan through it tonight while we're waiting, that's fine. If anyone would like to borrow it, we do have another hard copy at the office. Please don't lose it, board members, if you would like to borrow it.
I would like to take it. I would like to read it. They can look at it, but if I can maybe take it home and then have it for a day or two to read through it and you can send it back, that would be great.
Sure. You can drop it off here to Jerry or the SAU?
That would be wonderful. Thank you. I can read it too. It's on tape.
Body on tapes. It's not a bad idea. You don't take them long, I've got them.
I know, because they're on the car.
Anybody in the public likes some chocolate?
Some people in the administration might take some.
Yeah, hand it on up.
Liz? There you go.
That chocolate takes it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. She wasn't going to care.
Is there a Mr. Byrne?
No, no, I thought I saw one.
Where are we at with the administration's school's?
I have an update that I got today. We've only gotten one more in since the last one.
Is that going to be non-publically got that list?
Thank you, sir.
Well, I don't... I'm not sure that you need the actual list and the number of names on it. It's got to go to the...
That didn't necessarily have the Paul School one, did it? That was just...
This is the Spalding one?
Just Spalding?
Yeah. Anybody?
It's not. But I'll take that back, though.
Yeah, it ended up next to me. It's not one.
So, are you saying that as of today, we were down to 42?
One seat. No. Just one.
One more.
There's 43, so I hate to...
I will second Bonnie's motion to approve the manifesto.
Which one is which? We have 40 remaining.
Forty?
Yes.
This is the Paul School or Spalding?
Spalding.
And what steps are we at to rectify those names that are still here?
My understanding was that after the last meeting that these names were going to the Truant officer. So, my assumption is that there is work being done on it. This list we got in from Spalding about what they have received. So, I will put on the list to follow up with Truant officer to see if he's having any success.
Same with the Paul School at this point, you know.
What are the numbers for Paul School?
I'm not sure of the numbers. I just got the list today and I didn't count them up long. But I'm passing that list on to me.
Okay. And are we still looking into how we're going to rectify this situation in the fall to make it like...
I'm hoping... What I'm hoping to do is send it home with all the returning, with all the students at the end of the year and get this in before... Hopefully, get the bulk of it in before school even starts. And then, we can start following up over the summer with these pieces.
So, with a cutoff date, basically?
Well, by the end of the year. You send it home, have it home before school years down. We get most of them involved if we can.
Well, if you think of like the school nurse sends home paperwork, if you're... Do you get all of those emergency cards back?
We get the emergency cards back pretty quickly because people want to be notified.
Well, then, if you say that... I mean, is there a way that we can just tell them how, you know, that it's imperative? That... There has to be a way that we can let them know that it's... How important it is. And if we can, you know, if they're willing to do an emergency card, I mean, it's...
It's important to... That's important to them, I think. I'm not quite sure the residency paperwork is as important to most people as it is to us.
Well, if you had to tell them that your child couldn't attend school until the residency form was filled out, then that would be a pretty strong issue, I would think, that they would care about.
I think they would too, at that point. And we can throw this in. Scotty. Every once in a while, it can be a great idea.
The emergency form and the residency paperwork, the same piece of paper. And then, you know...
If it's on the same piece of paper, that would be great.
I'm glad he's sitting. He makes me look so much smarter.
Thank you.
I have a motion, second, to approve the manifest. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Close. All right. Can I have a motion to go into non-public under 91A23?
Which... What?
Security?
Under security. Security would be...
Security would be... RSA 91A32I. Consideration of manage of leading to the preparation form, the carrying out of emergency functions, et cetera.
Do you have a motion?
I made the motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Bog I.
Sierra.
Bull I.
Brown slightly.
Thank you.
Do we have the rest of those? Throw those over to... Thanks for coming.